Hi, and welcome to the January Board wrap-up. The Poughkeepsie City Board of Education went their January Board meeting. And we're going to talk with Superintendent Dr. David Pennington about that Board meeting. I guess people saw in the newspaper on Sunday, a picture of our Board members.
Right.
In January, as we start the second part of the school year, a good chance to remind folks of the good work our Poughkeepsie City Board of Education does.
Well, January is Board Member Appreciation Month. And, you know, it is an opportunity to be reminded of the great work that these citizens do. An opportunity, as you maybe see one of those in the street, or you're in town or in business, at lunch somewhere, and you were to see Dr. Kincaid, or Don Newsom, Judy Troop, Robin Riley, or Ron Hartman. And just tell them thanks. You know, whether you necessarily agree with every decision they make, or every position they take. They volunteer. It's a volunteer service. It takes probably more time than most people recognize to, by the time you're attending Board meetings, attending the committee meetings that we have, where we discuss various aspects of the business of the school. The phone calls that they take, the complaints that they get from people as they're either at town, or going to dinner, or at church, or whatever. And, you know, they don't get paid a dime for any of this. It really is a community service in its highest fashion. And it's a position that has, you know, in this era of people wanting to change schools and reform schools, Boards of Education have taken, I think, an unfair amount of criticism. Board members are not educational experts. They're not elected to be educational experts. They can't be educational. They have jobs. They have other careers. And so, they rely upon the professionals that they employ. And they carry out state and federal law. So, and, you know, reality is ninety, it seems like ninety-nine percent sometimes, it may not be that high, but a vast majority of what we do, whether it's the assessments that we give, the teacher evaluation system that we've adopted and we're moving to this year, the courses, or the course requirements that students have in order to graduate, the rules about social media and internet blocks, and all those things, all come to us from above. And the Board doesn't have a lot of choice in what we do. And that's frustrating. You know, there was a day in time when Board policies were local policies, and that local Board decided how those policies would be structured. Today, you might get to tweak them a little bit, but you really don't get to make very many of them. And, you know, and that's frustrating. And in a lot of ways, I think it's made it harder to find individuals to serve on Boards. And if you look at Boards of Education, you know, thirty years ago, your school Board would have been business leaders, you know, it had been a president of the bank, or maybe a owner of a corporation, or a downtown business person. You don't find very many school Boards with those people on them today because it hurts their business. And so, they opt out. I mean, we've just become a more critical society, I guess, in a lot of ways. So, I appreciate the five people that we have that are serving. You know, it's hard to put yourself out there and take positions. It's hard to put your name on a ballot. And, you know, I appreciate somebody like, you know, Judy Troop, who has not only served this district as a teacher, but has served, I guess, nine years on the Board, and has decided to put herself out there and run for reelection for another term against two opponents. So, you know, I just appreciate people willing to do that.
There's a lot to being a Board member. There's a lot of training and classes. And if people watched the January Board meeting, there's continuing education. I know that in the January Board meeting, there is an effort to make sure the Board is educated now on how the technology, architecture, the bond issues. There was a time when maybe they didn't have to know all that. And I guess you can talk about the fact that you're, as you go on, we're still trying to educate our Board of Education on those terms.
You know, you can't walk into that job and know what to do day one. You know, I really think that it takes three years. I mean, for somebody to really understand the job, and really know the issues, and understand where we're headed with curriculum, where we're headed with teacher evaluation, where we are financially, where we're headed with technology, it's a three-year process. And there may be somebody out there that is a quick study and has time to devote to that, but they're not going to do that, or they can't do that. And again, it gets down to, you know, sometimes the public in general thinks that Board members make every decision for the district. And that's just not the way it works. They are lay leaders. Their job is to make Board policy, and then to hire a superintendent who makes sure that Board policy is being carried out. But yet, there's so much to that policy part of it, that they have to have a lot of hours. You know, when you're first elected to the Board, you have eighteen months to get fifteen hours of training. And then you have to get, I think, another twelve hours of training before you can run for reelection. And then if you get reelected, you have to go back to get some more new Board member training. So, yeah, I mean, our folks are consistently, and the good thing about this Board is they really do want to learn. I mean, our Board members, they don't just do the minimum requirements. They, you know, if the law says you've got to have fifteen hours, they're going to get thirty hours. I mean, they're always going to workshops, either done by the State Department of Education or the School Board Association, so that they can learn more about the job they have to do. And then even outside of all that, there's just things that we continually educate them on. Yesterday, we had a presentation by Troy Lewis on construction management. Traditionally, what we've done in this district, and what most districts in the state have done, is when we want to build something, we put out a proposal, and contractors look at that proposal, and they bid on that. And they say that, okay, we can build Garfield Elementary for $3 million. And somebody else may say, we can build Garfield Elementary for $2,999,000. It's pretty cut and dried. If that company has their bid projects in hand, they have their bonds, they meet all the requirements, we accept the lowest bid, and we go on down the road, and we work with that contractor. That's probably not the way that most public companies do that. If, I mean, you know, if a company's going to build an office building, or going to build a new plant, they're going to sit down with architects, and typically, they're going to bring in a construction company at the same time, and they're going to work on that together, so that the architect and the person that's building the building, from the beginning of the process, work together to build the best facility they can for the owner. In school jargon, we call that construction manager at risk. It's an option that we were granted in Oklahoma a few years ago. It's becoming very popular in Oklahoma. So, last night, at the school Board meeting, Troy Lewis educated our Board on some of the basics about construction management, exactly what it is, what it isn't. One of the big kind of misconceptions is that construction management is something you do to save money. Sometimes it does save you money. It would make sense that if you've got the architect and the contractor together from the beginning, that they can work all those details out about the construction process, so that whenever you bid the project, you shouldn't have any surprises. You shouldn't find out that you left something out. Or there shouldn't be somebody that comes to you and says, well, there's an easier way to do this that's a little bit less expensive. You should have all that worked out before you bid the project. So, you know, we've not committed to that. That's something that I think we're going to look at. If our bond issue passes in February, we have several construction projects as a part of this. And so, we may, maybe the first one, maybe the second one, somewhere in that process, we may decide to try construction management, see if it works for us, and see if we like it. So, you know, I've kind of changed my mind on this. This is something that I wasn't really thrilled about in the past, but I think that it just really does make sense, that if you have the architect, you have your contractor, together from the beginning, that in the end of the day, you ought to get a better project. You should avoid some of the things that happen on every construction project I've ever been involved in, where something was left out, or the architect has drawn something, and it just won't work. You know, it may be hard to believe that, but that happens. So, we talked about that last night.
Speaking of the bond election, it's a month away, but certainly, we want people to be aware of February 12th, Tuesday. That's a big day for our schools.
Well, it is. And we're going to ask, we're asking the community for about $16.7 million in bonds. $500,000 of that is transportation. There'll actually be two issues on the ballot. One issue will be for a transportation bond issue for $500,000. And that money will be used to buy a new handicap bus, which, our handicap bus is over ten years old, and we need to replace it. And then to buy three route buses, or three eighty-five passenger buses. Those will be activity buses for us at first, because anytime we buy buses, we use them for activities. That's to take, you know, our kids out of town to events. And then as they, as activity buses get older, we move them into town, and they become route buses for us. We travel a lot in this district, because we're isolated geographically, and other schools our size. And so, whenever we're playing almost any of our athletic events, or whether it's band competitions, or speech and debate competitions, whatever we might do, whether it's a decadent competition, anything we do with kids, where we go and we interact with students from other school districts, we're either going to Tulsa or Oklahoma City. And we just do that a lot. And so, but it's, you know, it's part of that educational process, and that's the way we've always done it. I mean, it's not a new thing that, I mean, anybody that's watching this on television that played football, or basketball here, or wrestled, or played baseball, or was in the band, knows that they made a lot of bus trips over there, from the time they were in eighth grade to the time they graduated from high school. So, that's one part of the bond issue. The next part of the bond issue, and I told you, Phil, I had to bring my cheap sheet, because we have so many projects that are a part of this. We, first of all, our priority in this bond issue is technology and security, followed by ADA accessibility, and then instructional supplies and materials, and then trying to make our facilities equitable at all sites. So, what does that mean? Well, it means we're going to ask for $16,255,000 in building bonds. And with that bonds, we're going to spend $9.3 million on facilities, and $6.8 million on technology. So, what are we going to get for that? Well, we project $2.4 million at Woodlands Elementary. And what we want to do is, we want to eliminate, we have portable buildings behind Woodlands, we have a portable building that has two classrooms. We want to eliminate that portable building, and where those portable buildings sit, build two, really build three classrooms where that sits. And then, we want to install an elevator at Woodlands. Right now, Woodlands, Liberty, and Trout are not handicap-accessible buildings. So, if we have a student that lives in the Trout District, and they're in a wheelchair, they have to attend one of their elementary schools. I mean, we've done that since, I mean, for over twenty years. That's how long the American Disability Act has been passed. We could do it for twenty more years, but you know, we really ought to get that fixed. We ought, a student shouldn't have to go to a different school because of a handicapping condition. The other part of that is, as a parent, should not, not able to go visit a school because they can't get to their child's classroom because we don't have handicap accessibility. So, that's something we should have, that we just need to correct, and we've had lots of other needs across the district over the years, and now we're at a point where we can address that issue. We're going to put sprinkler system at Woodlands. Our newer buildings are sprinkled. In fact, today, if you were to build Woodlands today, you would have to put a sprinkler in it, so we're going to do that. Probably the biggest part of this project is, we want to move the administrative offices that are in the center of the building to the front of the building, like we've done at West, so that if anyone comes into the building after school has started, they have to go through the office. Now, that's a security measure. Of course, obviously, what we used to think about school security, and what we think about school security now, has changed after Sandy Hook. You know, our focus of security has always been to keep people from coming into our building and going wherever they could go without checking through the office, to keep somebody from taking a child. I mean, that's just kind of how you plan those things. We have to think about that differently now, because we've, we actually have an example of an armed intruder who is not a student, who's come into a building and done the unthinkable. So, you know, this is something, if the bond issue passes, that this will be modified a little bit. We're not sure what that modification will be. But that's what we're going to do at Woodlands. At Lincoln, we have budgeted $2.3 million to replace the roof and the HVAC system. It's hard to believe that Woodlands is eighteen years old, and so, it's time to update that. What we have found with the metal roofs, we've already done across the district, that when we put that metal roof down, it protects our air conditioning and heating systems. They're not exposed to the elements, they work better, they work more efficiently, and it's an energy, so we get the energy saving from updating equipment, but we also get the energy saving having that enclosed. So, we like that at our elementary schools. $725,000 at Union, and that again, is to bring the office to the front of the building, so that somebody has to go through the office. If you've ever been to Union, you know it is the tiniest office I've ever seen. I'm not sure how they function in there. And then, at Solon Stadium, we have allocated $600,000 to build new restrooms. You know, we've done some work on those since I've been here, and we just have some issues with the size of our sewer line and some other things, and we need to build a new press box. And as a part of that, we will actually build the pit and prepare for the day that hopefully will happen Sunday, we're building a new press box. And so, the new press box, because of ADA requirements, will have to be handicap-accessible. So, we'll go ahead and build the, at least part of the structure for an elevator. At Trout, we're going to spend $2.7 million. Again, this is replacing the portable buildings with classrooms. We take the portables out, we replace that classroom space. Again, going to move the front office to the front of the building, which, of course, you have to have money for the space that was the office, you now renovate into something else. Also, we'll put an elevator at Trout, and we'll sprinkle Trout. Liberty, this is $500,000, $600,000. The office area at Liberty is in the front of the building, so it's just a matter of doing some minor construction there, so that once people come in again after hours, they're forced to go through the office. And then, an elevator and a sprinkler system at Liberty. Technology, we're going to spend, again, almost $6.6 million on technology. Computers, that means desktops, notebooks, netbooks, iPads, interactive whiteboards and servers. So, what does that mean? Well, we're going to put a hundred whiteboards at the high school. We have about a hundred classrooms at the high school that don't have an interactive whiteboard. So, we'll put a hundred whiteboards there. We're going to expand our one-to-one computer initiative. Right now, our eighth graders, our ninth graders, and our sophomores are provided with a laptop. Our juniors and seniors, where, you know, our original plan was to do one grade at a time, but what we've found out is that, especially at the high school, we have so many, you know, so many of our classes have juniors, seniors, and sophomores in them, that it really is an issue that everybody didn't have a laptop. So, we're going to go ahead and make that investment right away. We're going to buy iPads for the students at West Middle School, so that every other, so two classrooms will share an iPad card. So that, you know, if you're my teaching partner, I have the iPad card in the morning, you have the iPad card in the afternoon. And the same thing at the elementary school, so that for every two classrooms, we'll have an iPad card available. When it's all said and done, we'll purchase about 1,500 iPads to make all that happen. In addition to that, we have some interactive whiteboards that we bought several years ago, that it's time to replace those, so we'll replace about sixty of our iPad, or whiteboards. We recycle computers in this district every four years, so we have teacher computers and office computers that need to be replaced, that we'll actually be replacing, doing the replacement at the high school, and over the three-year period, all of our elementary sites. We have licenses, software licenses. As we bring more and more technology to the district, we have more and more software requirements. So, things like accelerated reader, accelerated math, maybe terms that some of our parents know about, our internet filter. We have to pay a licensing fee for that every year. And then electronic textbooks. We will, once we get a laptop in every student's hand, then we won't have any, I mean, we'll probably maybe buy a classroom set of textbooks just to have for some reason. But all the textbooks that our students currently have will now be on their laptop. And if nothing else, you won't have, you won't see kids walking around with a backpack full of books that I'm not sure how much they ever open up at home anyway. And then finally, we have allocated in this bond issue, $200,000 for instrumental music. We do that with every bond issue we have. Every time we do a series of bond issues, we take some money that we allocate for instrumental music program. We're very fortunate that we have both a band and orchestra in this district. You know, it was interesting, we went to play at Owasso this year, and you know, we think of Owasso as, I mean, it's one of the largest high schools in the state. And I happened to be talking to their superintendent, and of course, they have a huge band. And so, I asked him, I said, well, you know, how many of these kids, how many of your kids play in band and orchestra both? And he said, well, we don't have orchestra. You know, and it's one of those things we've done here for so long, we just think it's a given. But it's not. There are lots of districts across the country that are our size and larger, that don't have orchestra programs. And we have a program, because we have great teachers. Dan Larson and his staff did a tremendous job of keeping orchestra something that our students are interested in, regardless of the changes we've seen in this community over the last fifteen years.
A lot of the things you've talked about, to a person like me, maybe in the fifty range, it sounds so futuristic. Is it, or are we just doing what's necessary to try to make sure we're staying with other school districts in the state?
No, Phil, I'd really say that if you look at where we are technology-wise, that, I mean, we're ahead of most districts in the state of Oklahoma. In fact, you know, we, because of the one-to-one initiative, we've become very familiar with the technology department, the State Department of Education. And a gentleman named Eric Hyman has been the tech director for Oklahoma for a number of years. He, this fall, took a job at Oklahoma City Public Schools. And when we had our tech fair in October, where we, you know, we had students demonstrating all the different things we do with technology, Eric brought his staff and some teachers from Oklahoma City and other administrators to see what we're doing. And we find that that's the case, pretty much statewide, that maybe some people do a little bit of what we do, but when you look at not only putting technology in students' hands, but how teachers use that for instruction, what we're doing at the elementary schools, what we're doing at West Middle Schools, where we have iPads and iPods, and we've got a lot of technology that we're putting in kids' hands. You know, our mission statement is to prepare our children to live and work in a global society. And I think anybody, regardless of what job they have, knows that technology is an integral part of every job today. And so, the more of it we get in their hands, the more exposure they have, then the better they're going to be prepared. You know, and the issue is really not the kids as much as it is our staff. Because our staff, even though we've come a long way in the last three years, we still have so much to learn about how do we make technology, how does it really become a powerful tool for student instruction? I mean, how do we really unlock the potential? In the future, I think that you're going to see that teachers are going to become more, especially at the high school level, are going to be more facilitators than instructors. That's going to be their job, because the information that students need, if you think about when we sat down in a class, you know, a lot of what teachers did was provide us information. You know, we had a textbook that had a little bit of information, but they kind of filled in the gaps for us. Well, we don't need teachers to fill in the gaps for us today, because I have all the information that's available in the world in my hand. And so, what I have, what teachers have to do is, they have to teach me how to apply that information, how to think about that information, how to synthesize it, how to look at something that happened fifty years ago, and how did it affect us today, something that happened a hundred years ago, and how does that lesson from that apply today? And so, it really is an exciting new world. And we're on the edge, you know, we're not where we want to be. Our goal is to, as quickly as we can, make the transformation from our grandfather's to our grandchildren's education. And because, you know, that's where the world's headed. It's headed, it's not, you know, as a baby boomer, we may be the biggest demographic, and we may be the, you know, there's a lot of things that we dominate, but we sure don't dominate the future.
That in itself could be a mission statement, right? Yeah. Our grandfathers to grandchildren.
Sure.
You know, one other thing, before we end our program, you talked about, in your Board meeting, revenues.
Yes.
And I'm sure people are interested, maybe why some of the surrounding states' revenues maybe are going in a different direction, and I thought you might have addressed that.
Well, it was an interesting discussion, and we'll have this on the channel that, on this channel this shows up on, we're going to put this PowerPoint out, so people can see it. I think a couple of things are very interesting. In 1999, 2000, the average, state average of what we spent per child in Oklahoma was $7,387 a kid. The regional average at that time was $8,249 a kid. About $900 difference between what we spend, and what the schools, districts, states in our region spend. National average was $9,456, a little bit more than $2,000 more than what we spend in Oklahoma. In 2008, 2009, and that's before the economic crisis, so you think about that. This is when things were still relatively good in Oklahoma. The difference between us, we spend $8,500 a student, the region average was $10,000 a student. That $900 gap had grown to a $1,500 gap. The national average was $11,300 per kid. So, that national gap had grown by a little bit less than $3,000. So, who's in our region? Arkansas, Colorado, Kansas, Missouri, New Mexico, Texas. If you drive 22 miles north, cross the Kansas line, the state average expenditure on a child in Kansas in 2009 was $11,593 a student. In Oklahoma, it was $8,504 a student. You know, it's hard for me to imagine that somehow Kansas is able to have the political will, and it's a political decision, to spend almost $3,000, well, $3,000 more per student than we do. It's pretty amazing when you think about it, in the educational quality that you can purchase for that. Texas is the closest to us at $9,350 a kid, but they still spend almost $800 more per student than we do. Arkansas, I don't think any of us that are around and think of Arkansas as a wealthy state. They spend $9,700 per student, almost a little $1,200 more than we do. New Mexico, I don't think of New Mexico as a wealthy state. They're right there with Arkansas. So, who's in our region? Arkansas, Colorado, Kansas, Missouri, New Mexico, Texas. Regional average is $10,109. Oklahoma spends $8,504. One of the things we brought up yesterday is, a lot of people talk about cost of living. And, well, the cost of living in Oklahoma is so much cheaper. If you look at the cost of living, a hundred percent is the If you look at the cost of living, the hundred percent is the, is the, is the, would be the, the national average, I assume. Colorado Springs, it's, is ninety-two point eight percent of the national average. Wichita's ninety-one point eight percent. St. Louis is ninety point four percent. Dallas is ninety-one point nine. Well, the cost of living in Oklahoma City is ninety-one point seven. So that's not a dramatic difference. Tulsa's eighty-eight point four, they're a little bit less expensive. But still, it's not like that we're half of the national average. So, you know, a dollar does go a little further in Oklahoma, but it doesn't go dramatically further than it does in places, in, in Texas, Arkansas, places like that. If, if we received the regional average in dollars, we'd have seven million dollars more to spend in this district to educate our kids. Now, what's scary in Oklahoma, since this two thousand nine, we actually have thirty-three thousand more students in this state. But we, but our funding, our revenue statewide is down two hundred and seventy-one million dollars. So we have more kids, and we have two hundred and seventy-one million dollars less to spend on those kids than we had in two thousand nine. Now, what's even more alarming about this, you know, we've obviously been in the Great Recession, and we, you know, we all know that that's been tough all across this country. Only two other states cut education spending more than Oklahoma. And those were Arizona and Alabama. Our revenue, our spending was cut twenty percent in this state for students. And, 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 you know, I mean, I, I think that's amazing. There are actually some states in that same, same time period that increased spending for, for schools. The, the state that's increased their spending the most is North Dakota. They've increased funding to comp to public ed in, in North Dakota by twenty-eight percent over the last four years. Now, how did they do that? Well, they had a, they had a boom in oil and natural gas. But you know, we've had a boom in oil and natural gas in this state, that, you know, that North Dakota's the only state that, that has drilled and produced more natural gas and oil than Oklahoma. But yet, they've increased, they've taken that money, and they've increased spending for schools twenty-eight percent. Well, we've cut spending for schools in this state twenty percent. So what's the loss to us? We have a, we have one point seven million dollars, almost one point eight mil- one point seven seven, almost one point eight million dollars less to spend in this school district today than we did in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Now, we've weathered that. We weathered it with federal money. We had the federal stimulus money, then we had the federal jobs money. We're at a point now where the Oklahoma economy has recovered. It's not quite back to where it was two thousand eight, two thousand nine, but it's a lot closer. And while I don't necessarily expect that we're gonna get all of that one point seven million dollars back, but we ought to start getting some of it back. And we ought to be done with the days where we level fund schools. And, and the reason I talk to the board about that is to, is to help them understand that as we start the legislative session, and we're gonna hear a lot in this session, there's, there's a lot of demand out there. You know, schools, public K-12 education wants money, higher ed wants money, Department of Human Services wants money, health and, or the correction department wants money. We all, we all want money, and we've all been cut. We've all been cut, okay? And the legislature has a tough job. And I, and I don't know what the answer is. I'm glad that's not my responsibility to figure out how to fund the needs of the state of Oklahoma. But what I know is this, that you can't get back, you can't catch up in school. What we lose because of higher class sizes in instruction, by having, you know, twenty-seven kids in a class instead of twenty-four. What we lose when we're not off, if, if we get to the point, and we're not there yet, but if, but if we don't get some help this year and next year, in three ye- in, in a couple of years, we may have to make some very hard decisions about what programs we offer in this state. But when you eliminate a program, and I don't care what it is, you eliminate a, a sport, you, you eliminate a course offering, you eliminate an art class, you eliminate an instrumental music or vocal music class. I mean, I don't, I don't care what you eliminate. Whatever it is, that is an experience that that, that the kids, the children that would have enrolled in those courses would not get back. And, and unfortunately, in this state, we have a large number of students who come from families in poverty. And we already have huge gaps that we have to overcome. And we can't overcome those gaps without money. I wish we could, but we can't. And, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it gets into a vicious cycle, because, you know, we've eliminated a lot of positions in this district over the last three or four years to try to save money. But every position we've eliminated, there's been a cost. Some of those positions we've added back. Because while you might operate a year, or maybe two years without a position, you can't do that forever. And, and it's just unfortunate, because what we can't do, because we don't have the money we need, you know, we ought to be, we ought to be, what, what really should be happening this session is, is we ought to be funded where we were in two thousand nine. We should be funded better than that. I mean, no, if you think about it, how many, how many, everything else has gone up. The cost of everything we buy is more than it was in two thousand nine. But because of some of the decisions we made when, in, in tax policy in this state, because we did have an income tax cut at the same time the recession hit, so we don't have funds available to invest in our schools. So where we ought to be having a discussion about, gee, what can we do to help with mental health? Because I really think that's the issue when it comes to school shooting. It's not, I mean, you may make some changes in gun laws, and that may help a little bit. To me, the real issue is the, the mental health services we provide for students, and the mental health services we provide as a community for our folks that need those, those kinds of services. That's the discussion we ought to be having.
And we're not even there yet.
We're not, we gotta get, we gotta get back to just having basic school services before we can even have that discussion. And it's frustrating. And, and it's only gonna change when the citizens of this state hold their elected officials responsible. Because I promise you this, in the election, they all raise their hand and say, oh, we, we support education, and we, and we wanna provide the best education we can for our kids. This weekend in Kansas, the Kansas Supreme Court ruled that the state was in violation of, of their, of state law because of cuts they'd made to education. And they ordered them to increase school spending by, I think, two hundred and thirty-some-odd million dollars. Kansas has a provision in their state constitution that requires for an adequate education. Unfortunately, we don't have a provision like that in Oklahoma. But if Kansas is already spending more than we are, and the Kansas Legislature, or the Kansas Supreme Court said, you've gotta spend more to provide the education that you're, that you're required to provide our children, it just makes you wonder, what? You know, when are we gonna get serious about educating our kids? When, when, and, and, you know, when, and again, we all, everybody, I understand. When, when you have recessions and you have to make cuts, you have to make cuts. But, but we've had two years now of, of increases in school funding, or increases in state revenue. And last year, the state, the schools in the state did not get a dime of that new revenue. And I just think that's wrong.
Our representatives would, would tell you different, but, and I think like you, I think education should be the number one thing. And it's, it's just not. It is a priority, but it is not priority number one.
Well, again, we didn't get a dime of new money. Our, we were funded the same way in two, in fact, it's actually, because there are more students, the money we have is actually less. So if you think about that, every school in the state is operating on less money this year than they were last year. But yet, state revenue is up significantly. It was up significantly the year before, and it's up, it's up, it's at least this year even with what it was last. So, and so where did that new money go? Well, it went to transportation, and transportation's important. I don't, I mean, I understand that. But when they, when they cut the tax incentives, when they took those away for a couple of years to help balance the budget, they paid those companies back. They paid them back before they paid back the schools of the state of Oklahoma. Again, you know, I, you, makes you kind of wonder about that.
Good luck on February twelfth. Don't forget, that'll be the day to vote. We'll talk about that before then, but we appreciate Dr. Pennington's time. A January board wrap-up.